Good evening. I'm going to call the Willet City Council meeting to order at 6:31 on this June 12th. And we'll begin with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Everyone's present. Good evening. The next order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes input from the audience. You can address the council for up to three minutes on any item that is not on the agenda. With that being said, is there anybody from the public that would like to address us? Mr. Stransky, go ahead and step on up.
Good evening. I have a simple request, which is, of course, going to be a complicated request, I'm sure. I was here at the meeting where I very much appreciated, I almost said Mayor Connie, member Connie's request for the sidewalks, that she didn't think it was right that we paid for all of the other people's work and for their sidewalks repaired. And I have the same feeling about all the vehicles that are up and down the street that are left there for days, weeks to years. James Connors was here, came and looked at, ooh, a place up on Maple where there was a large trailer, and he asked the lady about moving it. And she said, I know the 72-hour law. All I have to do is go out there and roll it, and you can't do a thing about it. And I thought, ouch. So, anyway, he was very patient, and he kept checking. But I know there's a boat without a car hook to it or anything that's sitting on Pine Street. And I would say, without exaggeration, it's been there two years. I've seen the tag on it, but no one ever came and removed it. And there's just vehicles like that all over town. A fellow did put his trailer at the end of my driveway, and I went down and apologized to him, but I asked him to please remove it because I was coming before the council. And I said, I know where you live. You're just down the street, and you don't have your trailer parked in front of your house. And I'm on the curb where the buses come. And I've seen the buses go to that corner and then have to back up to let a car through. And we're still experiencing, of course, the parents bringing their kids to elementary school. And what I'm asking for, as I said, not to be too wordy, I would please like consideration and looking at that problem and maybe have a resolution as you have for the sidewalks.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public? All right. Hearing none. We're going to move on. We have an off-agenda item this evening. We would like to add item 13B to closed session, which is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code 54957.6. Agency negotiator would be Brian Bender, city manager, and Patrick Clark Consulting. And the employee organization would be the Willets Police Officers Association and Management Team. In order to add this to the agenda, we would need a four-fifth vote. Is anybody willing to make a motion to add this to the agenda? Thank you. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Roll call. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. All right. We'll add this item to closed session. And then I'd also ask that each of you would join us in a moment of silence honoring the memory of Linda Buletti Burton, who was the wife of our past Mayor Bruce Burton. So we'll take a moment of silence. All right. This council sends our condolences to the Burton family. And I don't know if there are members of the staff who want to just say a few words. Go ahead, Kathy.
I don't know. Everybody saw the paper that they are going to do a memorial celebration of life for her members tomorrow, next Saturday, 27th and 25th. It would be nice if the members could.
Thank you. Yes.
I loved Linda. She was a lovely lady. She did so much for our community. And one of the things that was really important to her was the fountain at Babcock Park on Main Street. She led the effort to have it replanted several years ago when there was nothing around it. And I would call her every so often and say, we're working on it. We'll get the fountain working again, I promise. And we didn't get it done in time. But I would hope that, I know that the plans are in the works, and I would hope that at some point we could maybe do some sort of memorial plaque or at least rededicate the fountain in her honor. She did so much for our community.
I think that's a great idea. See what we can do about that. Any other staff members? Okay. We send our condolences to the family. All right. Moving on to public matters. Do we have anybody from the Frontier Days? I don't see anybody yet.
I don't think there will be.
There was one. I got notification that Jeff was going to show up and apparently didn't make it.
So we'll hold this item over if there's no objection until we see a representative from the Frontier Days. Enactment of ordinances, we have none before us this evening. So moving on to the consent calendar, we have the minutes of May 22nd, 2024. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Would anybody in the public like to address us on the minutes of the meeting? We'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Motion carries. Monthly activity reports, the business license activity report for May 2024, as well as the building activity report for May 2024 is in the packet. Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments about those activity reports? Anybody from the council? All right. Well, acknowledge receiving them. We have no commissions, agencies, and authority business before us, so we'll move on to the city manager reports and recommendation. I'll turn it over to Brian Bender, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No action items tonight. I just want to bring a couple of updates for the benefit of the council and the members of the community. The first one was the recent Memorial Day Car Show, the first ever held on Main Street. To be honest, staff had some concerns on working with the logistics and the planning and the street closure and coordination with the Chamber of Commerce. But at the end of the day, it was successful. We learned our lessons once again as we closed these streets, Main Street, on these events. We're getting there. We're learning what the nuances of these events. Once again, we want to acknowledge the effort of the Chamber of Commerce and all the volunteers. I know there's a couple of council members present. There were staff members, and I also want to point out the efforts of service and facility staff who did a heck of a lot of work on the prep side of things, and they're also present subsequently after the event. Walter and his team out there did a great job. And then community development was coordinating the street closure and other events associated with that, all the details that went into hosting the event. We were, once again, we were a knowledge sponsor. We're still trying to figure out the balance of what that entails. But we, we of the city here would strongly encourage other events as they come forward. It's not perfect. There are things we have to accommodate with the street closure, insurances, insurance, a lot of liabilities. But it was a good event. It was very popular. A lot of non-residents were present, and a lot of good selection of vehicles, good cars.
We do have this evening an award for the recognition, a token of recognition for the Willets Chamber of Commerce as a city from the council members, the city staff here, and ultimately, the city of Willets. I did notice that it looked like they had a chamber meeting this evening. Did they have a chamber meeting this evening? It looked, well, there were, there was something going on over at the office, so I suspect that they may have a meeting this evening, but we'll make sure that that gets, gets sent on to them.
So that was the car show. So the second item on the agenda is just an update on the master tax sharing agreement. I think I've been briefing the council since we have been working its way through the approval process. The board of supervisors adopted it last week, four to one. Their district supervisor, Mr. Hascheck, had dissented. There were some concerns, I think he raised about the, what the impacts were going to be on rural communities. I will be meeting with them with the mayor tomorrow and ask him for something aside on his concerns. But after almost two years' worth of work, we have agreement in place. Board of supervisors have adopted it. The, and I'm just reading off my notes here, so a week from tonight, it's going to go before the Ukiah City Council. We expect it to receive approval there. And then two weeks from tonight, it will be before this body, with hopefully a recommendation to approve it. Yes?
Brian, could you just reiterate to the public why a tax sharing agreement is important for the city to have with the county?
How long do we want to go with this? Let me simplify as much as I can. We do not have agreement, it has not, we have not had agreement in place for nearly multiple decades. As jurisdictions look to physically expand their boundaries through annexation processes and requests, one of the first steps that is necessary in that checklist of that approval process is having a tax sharing agreement, or how the revenue generated from sales tax, if there's a TOT generating property there, or property taxes will gradually shift from unincorporated Mendocino County to the subject municipality. It can get caught up, and annexation can be delayed indefinitely, just working through those details, because it's negotiated, especially if you have an already developed site. You have retail establishments that are generating sales tax for the county, and the county's like, you know, we can't afford to give this up. But essentially, the adjoining city or the adjacent city is providing those level municipal services. So it's a, it's a question of fairness. It's also, it's a question that we have recognized in Mendocino County that the incorporated cities have the, are in a stronger position to provide city-level services, where the county, they cannot. They're great at providing services to rural properties, large land holdings, but not the municipal services. So it is a benefit to developers, property owners, that everyone has to pay taxes eventually, but we want to make sure that those property owners are receiving the return on that benefit. For the city of Willets, we are going through the general plan amendment. We are looking at increasing our sphere of influence with potentially annexation, annexation to occur. We're in a different situation than Fort Bragg and Ukiah, where if we did annex, it would be predominantly undeveloped land or existing residential areas. But this agreement can simplify those annexations. And this agreement also has provisions in there where it's very, has multiple tiers relating to those jurisdictions. But there's also a caveat where we can branch out and say, okay, we want to have a separate agreement with Mendocino County if it's to our both parties' interests. So it, it ticks the big box for annexation requests, sphere of influence designations, as well as it gives property owners, if they want to be incorporated for any number of reasons to support their development projects, a means to go through the annexation process.
Thank you.
Sonoma County has had a county-wide tax sharing agreement in place for numerous years, and because of that, their, the way their local governance works is much more effective. All right. So the, the intention is to bring it before the council on the 26th. In your packet, and what's going to be in the council packet, it's going to be a very formalized document and then almost a crib sheet, basically breaking it down, what I just simplified or explained to the best, you know, kind of explaining all these components. And they're very complex because it goes into the details. It's, it's an agreement that's trying to rectify the mess that's in Ukiah Valley. We're fortunate we don't have that, but they do, and this agreement tries to address that.
All right. Thank you.
Two other items. I have one that's not on the agenda, on the agenda, but tomorrow, we're holding our first budget workshop for fiscal year 2425. It's going to be looking at some of the general fund performances, as well as some enterprise fund and special revenue accounts. We're not going to get through it in two hours, and we acknowledge that. We're, you have an item before you on the agenda tonight that's looking at a continuation of our current budget. We are going to ask for that consideration. We're going to be a month behind, but it's not because we're in a deficit on any accounts. It's just the working of the scheduling, the audits, the deployment of new accounting software, and just the scheduling. So we may need additional sessions in July. We're, once again, in tight schedules. We're going to look to free up some time on the June 26th agenda to dedicate maybe 45 minutes to an hour on any outstanding budget items that the council may identify at tomorrow's workshop that you want to spend more time on. As you start getting into budget documents, so if you just have questions relating to the budget, I'm available, Manny's available. We want you to be informed of what we're looking at and what we're trying to accomplish with the proposed budget. One last item. I just want to give the floor over to Walter to give a brief update on the PPP 23 pavement preservation project.
Here we go. Madam Mayor and city council, as you're aware, you know, we're doing the 23 PPP preservation project, most of the work on Bosco Bell and South Lenore. It's on schedule. Both roads have been paved, ground down, paved. We're waiting for, the project's nearly complete. They're going to be striping the road the first or second week of July, getting the stop bars and new stop signs, things like that. We did a small punch list the other day with the contractor and the engineering company, minor things that are, we're waiting for a few items, and will be done on schedule and under budget, which is great and everything. One part of the project that we haven't gotten into yet is there were some digouts on Bechtel Road, and we're still assessing whether or not we need to do those. What we did was a slight offset. There was a, right within a block of that area on Creekside Drive, there was a sink hole that's been causing a problem, and the sidewalks were disturbed there. The contractor, because he was already deployed in the area, gave us an excellent price, and we were able to incorporate that into the pavement preservation project and get that done. And we'll, even including that, will still be under budget right now. So the neighborhood has been thrilled. One thing that we're going to be changing quite a bit is on South Lenore, one side was a red curb, that there was only parking on one side. That's always been an issue, and when we did a traffic study about three years ago, it was recommended we remove that for two reasons, give people in the neighborhood enough room to park and slow down traffic. That road has had some issues with speeding through there, and especially with the new roadway, it's increased. So the neighborhood is very happy that they're going to be able to park both sides, and it's going to add some traffic safety to the road.
Thank you for that update.
Any questions or?
Anybody from the council who have clarifying questions? Go ahead.
A question for Brian. Is PG&E scheduling that outage on June 22nd? Is that still on schedule?
Yes. So staff and Kathy facilitated a call tomorrow with our contacts at PG&E. We have the map of the outlet. We have a list of service accounts within the city. That will be in basically the whole city, in the outlining areas. We're coordinating with our partners, stakeholders, first responders, law enforcement, public safety agencies, Caltrans. We're trying to bring as many of these groups together and work through it. So yes, it's going to be scheduled for the evening, early morning hours of the 22nd to the 23rd.
Question. Will we have some of our facilities on generators, like our lift stations?
Yes. So when we receive the first notice, Walter and his team has gone out and basically powered up all the remote generators, so they are ready to go.
Yes. Everything's prepared. We have even backup. There's power supply for streets, turn signals and everything in town. Those have a backup power supply, and we have mobile generators to power those up if they lose power. So we are, we're all prepared. The city's well-prepared. We did pick up a backup generator that comes every year from PG&E that'll power up City Hall, although it's in the evening hours. It starts about 11 o'clock until 6 a.m. So it shouldn't hopefully have too much disruption, but everyone's on, you know, on full alert to take care of any problems.
All right. Is there any public comment on managers' reports? Hearing none?
Madam Robby, I just got notified that Mr. Jeff Cook is sick. He's not going to be here to accept the proclamation, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. We will move on to item 9A. First item is to adopt a resolution authorizing continuation of municipal operations based upon the biannual fiscal year 2022-2024 budget.
Are you going to take up that proclamation just without this?
I'll come back to it. We're on item 9A.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council. As Brian, as the city council said, we are seeking a continuation in order to be able to continue to cut checks and everything like that in the meantime, while we still put together a lot of the budget and finalize everything. Most of this is necessary in order to be able to stay in compliance with governmental regulations to keep the proclamation flowing. If you have any questions.
I think that as a member of the finance committee, I've been fully informed, and I believe the council has too, as to why we're, we need this continuation. Does any council member have any questions? No? All right. Anybody from the public have a question or comment? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for staff recommendations.
Thank you. Anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Madam Robby? Yes. Thank you. All right. Next is a presentation and acceptance of audited financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. And I'll turn it back over to Manuel Roscoe.
So the audit for June 30th, 2022 fiscal year ending is complete, and we find ourselves in a scenario where we have approximately $300,000, $379,000 in surplus for the general fund. And as for water and sewer, there's $5.7 million in cash assets for sewer and $5 million for water. And as we go forward, we're now starting up the audit for '22, '23. And right now, it's just working in trouble and pushing through. And yes. With that being said, is there any questions on this particular item?
I think it, I think it's just important to clarify that we have a positive number, and we also still have the Measure K funding that is being held to the side.
Yes, yes. So Measure K is still being held to the side. It's over. It's almost that much money now, carrying over from year to year. We have spent some of it on items that are like single use in nature. A couple of items are that we have had approval for are two positions that we located. But aside from that, for the most part, most of that funding has been set aside.
And just for clarification, what Manny was saying is these, these were conversations we had with the Measure K Oversight Committee, where proposals for staffing and the manager's proposed project lists were presented to them, explained to the benefit of what we're trying to do with the staffing appointments as well as the projects. And once again, the projects were earmarked, a lot of deferred maintenance, got to catch up on items that have been long outstanding that needed attention.
I'm going to let Greta and I just add a little bit to that.
And just to clarify, the positions that were discussed are not in perpetuity. They're not adding new staff members that would go beyond the 10-year sunset of the Measure K funds. They are temporary positions to enhance some of the projects that are being brought forward that would utilize Measure K funding. So having an outside staff member to help essentially shepherd that project through, and then, once that's done, that staff member goes away. So it's not like we're adding staff that we won't have a way to pay for once Measure K sunsets.
And then I think it's also noteworthy that the, that the Measure K committee was very, very conservative in allocating any funds until we saw the, the budget was completed. And that's why we have such a large balance that's carrying forward. Just wanted to throw that there. And then councilmember.
Just to clarify, what you, I think what you just said was that the positive balance that we have for that fiscal year in the general fund does not include the Measure K revenue.
It does not include revenue.
Okay.
So no Measure K funds were allocated in that fiscal year. It's the current fiscal year that some, some funds have been, have been expended.
Okay.
With the blessing of the community.
Yeah. It'd be good to get that kind of a thumbnail sketch of the overall picture like that, but that's very helpful. Thank you.
Good questions.
And Manny, as far as some of the fund balances that, that were to the positive, was that as a result of projects not completed or positions not brought on or what? I mean, I know that, I'm not asking for a complete punch list on, because you'd be here all night to explain. In general, why did we have extra money?
Yeah. There's a few projects that have not been completed at that particular point in time. There's quite a few items that are part of the CIP list that are going for the budget this year, that is going to kind of start drawing down a lot of those funds. But in the meantime, at this particular point in time, projects were not done. And they just kind of faded off. They did hit some, but not all.
Wait. This audit, '21, '22, basically identifies, we were starting to ramp up. This was basically the first year Manny was in his position. We were identifying projects through the enterprise fund as well as street projects. You're going to see a difference when we get to '22, '23. That's when we were starting to implement projects and looked at a different staffing plan.
So we'll see a change to the general fund as well as the, the other funds.
One more question for you, Manny. In the finance committee, we heard that the final budget for the, I'm sorry, the audit for '22, '23 would be completed by the end of this fiscal year on June 30th. And we knew that that was hopeful and ambitious. Do we have maybe a new date?
We probably do have a new date. But definitely, I want it completed by the end of July, so that way we can continue forward and start up our audit after the period of availability at the end of August and have our audit ready to go sometime around the end of September. So the idea is just not only just to catch up and get ahead, but stay ahead and have our, have our audits completed by December 31st.
On time.
Supposed to be on time.
And as far as the council moving, looking towards the budget and the budget workshop that will be starting tomorrow, even though the audit for '22, '23 will not be complete, do we have essentially the appropriate data from that year to be able to help us make budgetary decisions?
Yes. So we will, we're not going to be touching most of the general fund. We're just going to be looking at a lot of revenue coming through so that we get an idea of like what we have in terms of money and we're going to be able to start parsing off to the different various departments. But, so we're going to be looking at this a lot of the revenue first and then special revenue funds. Within two hours, I'm thinking that we could probably get to all of those. And then if we can, we'll start trying to get into the rest. Hopefully, I'll be happy if we can just get to all of those special revenue funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions up here? I'll open it up to the public. Public have any questions or comments? All right. Let's see. We need to have an acceptance. Do you need a roll? Do you need a vote on the acceptance? I thought so. We do. Would you like to make the motion? Thank you. Strong?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Madam Robby? Yes. Motion carries five zero. Next order of business is to adopt a resolution to approve a revised injury and illness prevention program that provides all reasonable safeguards. a revised injury and illness prevention program that provides all reasonable safeguards for employee health and safety and to ensure employees perform their assigned tasks in a safe working manner and developing a safety awareness among the staff effective June 13th, 2024.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez. Councilmembers, you haven't seen me in a while. Happy to be with you.
Welcome.
This program is a separate standalone policy. It provides the essential framework to identify, evaluate, and eliminate workplace safety hazards. The council adopted a revision of this policy February of 2017. I got here in 2016. I was not able to locate when the initial policy was adopted originally by the city, but it's by council that's been in play for more than a decade. This policy provides all reasonable safeguards for employee health and safety, and the city has a responsibility to direct and ensure all employees perform their assigned tasks in a safe working manner. Everyone is responsible for injury prevention, and all employees stand to benefit from compliance with this policy. When you have an accident, everyone loses, the employee, their family, their coworkers, as well as the city. And this particular resolution goes for task number one under the instructions.
Thank you. Clarifying questions? Go ahead.
Did we reach out to the employee groups on this?
Not with the injury and illness prevention, as the changes were mainly due to the next increase that we have, or the next agenda item for workplace violence policy.
All right. Anybody from the public have a question or comment? All right. Hearing none. I'll bring it back up here. Anyone care to make a motion? Quiet group.
I'm going to adopt the new policy recommended by staff.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. The motion carries 5-0. All right. Moving on to the adoption of a resolution to approve a new workplace violence prevention program that outlines how the city will protect employees and prevent workplace violence within spaces under its control, and it would be effective June 13th, 2024. Turning it back over to Karen Stevenson, our Human Resources Manager.
Thank you. This program is also a separate standalone policy, and it was implemented in regards to SB 553, Labor Code 6401.9, which mandated all employers in California to create and implement a comprehensive workplace violence prevention program that includes thorough training, hazard assessments, incident logging, and the ability to maintain compliance records by 7/1 of '24. The law was inspired after some tragic mass shootings, and this program is enforced by the Division of Occupational Safety and Health. The City of Willets is concerned about committed and committed to the safety and health of all employees. We have a zero tolerance policy for violence in the workplace, and we will make every effort to prevent incidents from occurring through the implementation of this new policy. Our program ensures all employees, including management, adhere to work practices that are designed to make the workplace more secure and do not engage in verbal threats or physical actions that create a security hazard for others in the workplace. Management is responsible for ensuring all safety and health policies and procedures involving workplace security are clearly communicated and understood by all employees and to enforce these rules fairly and uniformly. This policy coincides with the city's injury and illness prevention program, which we just discussed. The city worked with CERA, our work pool, our work, excuse me, our risk pool, on the policy template and training materials. We did not receive them until 5/10 of '24. We had an option to purchase training materials, but we saved $3,500 by working with CERA. I did share this policy with the POA. They had no comments. IBEW, Mark Wilson, business rep, received it on 5/14. I did not hear anything from IBEW other than, thank you, I'll review it. I contacted him again on 5/29. I got no response. And again, this morning, I made a phone call and asked for comments or input, but I have yet to receive responses. Now, I do know that they are in current negotiations with other cities, so, you know, I, I don't really know the, why the reason why they didn't provide us any information, but I did reach out to both unions.
Okay. One can only assume then that there was no objection. All right. Anybody from council with clarifying questions? Go ahead, Gonzalez.
Will we be conducting some sort of training, familiarizing with all the?
Yes. Once the program is adopted, then I will tomorrow upload all of the training materials into Vector, which is one of CERA's training systems that we use as a tool. It'll be uploaded, and each employee will be able to go in and take the training, no different than what you do for IRMA when you go in to take sexual harassment training. So that is how it's going to be implemented. We are going to have a clear, tight schedule, because again, under the law, we are required to have everybody trained by 7/1.
All right. Well, thank you. Is there anybody from the public with questions or comments? All right. Bringing it back up here to the dais. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this item? Thank you. Cadet of motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. All right. The motion carries 5-0. Item 9E is local highway safety improvement plan funding for street safety improvement projects and authorizes $5,000 from Fund 200 as the city's contribution, which is 10% of the project's cost. Do we have someone speaking on this item?
Yes, Walter. Hi, Walter. Madam Mayor and City Council. Two years ago, city staff identified there was some funding available through the local road safety plan, through, and the local highway safety improvement program for federal funds to do road safety improvement projects. And they did, they came up with a couple of ideas, and two years ago, they put this in, and we just received funding and approval. So we have two projects, installing or upgrading regulatory warning signs, line edges, center lines on nine roadway segments along North Main Street, the lower part of Sherwood Road, East Commercial, McKinley Street, and Hazel Street, and another project to upgrade signal signs, pavement markings at Main Street and East San Francisco, West Valley and Main Street, and Main Street and Commercial. So we're looking at just accepting funding. We received $31,500 from the federal government, and then we have a portion. So we're gonna identify those projects. They're, they're small projects, but they're vital safety projects for the pedestrians and vehicles, and we'd like to implement that design and go ahead and do the work on those and get those done.
Right. Thank you. Did you have a question?
I did have a question. I, I brought this up with the city manager in our meeting this afternoon. I was a little concerned that in the accompanying resolution, there was no mention of the $5,000 portion that the city would be allocating as its matching portion. It's not required to be in that, but he did assure me that going forward, future resolutions, if they included a financial component, they would be line itemed out and would go forward to Manny before coming into this.
Yeah, just for clarification, this, that resolution was essentially what was provided to us from the state. It basically, it's, it's, it almost sidetracks the acknowledgement that you're accepting the funds and the project. What it's, it's basically doing is transferring your authority to me to act as the city representative. It wasn't a resolution composed to accept the project or allocate the funding. Maybe we should have put a recital in there to address it, but we basically just used the template that was provided.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment. It's amazing to get a lot of improvements done for relatively low cost there. It's, we're not used to seeing only $50,000 set of improvements for roads that actually accomplishes things.
Right. They're small improvements, but they're helpful. All of these are. Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public want to address us on this item? All right. Bringing it back up here to the dais. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve this item? Thank you. We have a motion. Stransky, second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to item 9F, adopt a resolution authorizing advertisement of the Steel Water Tank Site Improvements Project 2023-04, Phase 3 of the Groundwater Resiliency Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed $152,475 with a 10% contingency. And I'll turn it back over to Walter Colner, Service and Facility Director.
So last year, you approved a resolution to install a 250,000 gallon water tank that's part of our water system and storage capacity. That tank is going into production, but part of this, the third phase, was to do the groundwork and site work in conjunction with that tank that was put into design. We've already paid for the tank. It's gonna go into construction, and as soon as the groundwork and site work is done, it'll be installed later on this fall and become part of our water system and holding system. Yes.
Any clarifying questions up here? I think we all know how important the storage tank is. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us? All right. Bringing it back up here. Any comments or anybody who'd like to make a motion?
I would turn them over.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Next order of business is discussion and possible execution of an energy services agreement with?
Sizerco.
Sizerco Energy Solutions for the completion of a design and installation of a proposed solar photo?
Bailey.
Thank you. System has selected sites within the city consistent with California Government Code 4217 for an amount not to exceed $4,939,000. And I'm gonna turn it over to Leilani Shine, who is one of our contract planners.
Hi. Thank you, council members. I'll also be presenting with one of the members from Sizerco today, Gabe Johnson. He's in the audience. Gabe, if you want, you can join at the podium. And I believe we've got a mouse up there so we can, if you want.
We have a PowerPoint for you.
Yeah, we've got a PowerPoint if you want to go through the slides. But as we're bringing up the, the cover slide here, I can just briefly begin to, to introduce once we get things up here. So. Thank you, Delores. Can we go back one, please, Gabe? All right. So this presentation is in an overview. We're looking at the proposal that was brought forth by Sizerco that staff supports, that was in response to the request for proposal that was issued in January this year. So we're going to be looking at two potential sites for new solar installations, rooftop solar here at City Hall, and also carport solar installations over at the public parking area near the sports park area along Commercial Street. These installations are intended to be installed by April 2026, and that way we can maintain our NEM 2.0 rate. We'll, we'll get into that more. But there are some time-sensitive deadlines bringing forth this item today, and so we really want to spend some time walking through the process and how this quickly moving project is, is being brought forth. We can go on to our next slide. Please, Gabe? So I'll let Gabe introduce this.
Okay. Thank you, Leilani.
Yeah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name's Gabe Johnson, Sizerco Energy Solutions. So here's the agenda of the talking points that we have today to go over. We'll talk a little bit about the difference between NEM 2 and NEM 3, and there's also a very lucrative incentive program that's available for the project through the Inflation Reduction Act. Talk about the process, the project, a little bit about ourselves, I guess, why Sizerco was selected. And then I think Leilani has some comments about the review process that was, that had happened by staff.
Could you speak up a little?
Oh, sure.
That doesn't amplify.
It doesn't? Just speak up a little bit?
Just for the camera.
Okay. So some of you may be familiar with the term net energy metering. We refer to it as NEM. Back in late, sorry, it's kind of a censor. Back in December 15th, 2022, the California Public Utility Commission announced a drastic change that was going to be occurring in the net energy metering market. Currently, all of, the majority of the solar systems were being metered under what's called NEM 2, Net Energy Metering 2.0. And the CPUC had proposed to change that to NEM, from NEM 2.0 to NEM 3.0. And the difference between NEM 2 and NEM 3 is significant in terms of the, the financial value that the owners receive from the installation of their solar systems. So you can see on the slide here that generally speaking, the value of overproduction when you have a solar system under NEM 2 is approximately 70 to 80% greater than what it would be under NEM 3. And the reason for that is if you think about solar production kind of going up in the summer and then down towards the bookends of the month, and you have your energy use that's consistently flat, you have a period of time where you underproduce, and then you have a period of time where you overproduce, and then you underproduce. And under NEM 2, all of that excess solar production, you get credit for that at a 0.30 KWH rate. It can be used to offset that underproduction during those bookend months. If that, if that configuration changes to NEM 3.0, then the value of that overproduction dramatically has decreased. So there's a, there's a financially strong motivation, if possible, to try to build solar under NEM 2.0. That being said, the CPUC created a deadline, you can see on the slide, of April 14th, 2023, where any, anyone that was interested in installing solar in the future could submit what's called an interconnection application to get locked in to the NEM 2.0 status for the next 20 years. And so city staff did a fantastic job of getting the applications completed and submitted ahead of the deadline. The PG&E accepted the applications, and so there were two applications that were accepted, where if those projects move forward and they're built by April 15th, 2026, and connected to the grid, then the city will realize the benefits of NEM 2 and not NEM 3. And those two systems, as Leilani mentioned, are at the sports park and a small system in City Hall, and we'll talk a little bit about what those are and what they look like. So now transitioning over from the NEM concept to the Inflation Reduction Act, two totally different concepts. The Inflation Reduction Act is an incentive program through the bipartisan infrastructure law that provides basically cash incentive to, to solar owners, depending on how the projects are paid for. And so if a project is paid for with capital or cash, there's a 30%, what's called a direct pay incentive, that, that this program's actually been around for a long time, but it was only for tax, taxable agencies. The Inflation Reduction Act changed that so non-taxable agencies like cities and government agencies could receive the benefit as well. And so there's a 30% credit, and in addition to that, there's a short window right now where there's an additional 10% offset credit for low-income communities. So if the solar systems fall within a map that they've produced through the IRA, then there's an additional 10% bonus that's available. And these two systems both do fall into that 10% geographical map. So what we have here is an opportunity to secure the 30%, which is a program that's been in place for a long time. That's, that's a high level of certainty that that will be rewarded. The 10% bonus is an application period where you submit the application, and then you hope to get rewarded or awarded the additional 10%. And that, how they decide who has awarded those, that additional 10% is up to the discretion. And how they decide who has awarded that additional 10% is up to the discretion of the folks that are reviewing those applications. So those are the two, I guess, cash or cost offsets that are available for the program. And we'll come back in a second or two to talk about the specific systems and the differences and things like that.
Yeah, thank you, Gabe. Leilani Shine over here again. So just going through the process and timeline, as Gabe discussed, there were some initial conceptual considerations and project development that went into securing the NEM status 2.0 back in May 2023. And then the city took proactive measures to issue an RFP, Request for Proposal for Services, in January 2024. So today at the council meeting, we're also just looking at this deadline for tomorrow that includes signing the existing interconnection application that has been submitted for the sports park. And so once, if council makes a decision to approve this, that will be one of the next steps, is to get that interconnection application signed, returned to PG&E. And as Gabe was discussing separately, the IRA incentive, the 10% bonus, that submission is due by June 27th. So we'd be working quickly to meet that deadline and hopefully awaiting a response by July to understand whether or not we've received that 10% bonus. And whether or not we receive that 10% bonus, we may need to scale the project down slightly if we do not receive that. And that's where we're saying we can finalize the contract in August 2024, understanding how much, if we're going to get the amount, the full amount with the 10% bonus, or if there's going to be some scaling down to meet that project completion date by April 15th, 2026. Moving on, Gabe, options as we're moving forward.
I think one key thing to note on the interconnection applications, the city staff submitted those applications and they were accepted over a year ago. And after one year goes by, PG&E comes back and they say, if you don't sign these interconnection applications, your opportunity is going to go away. And that deadline was a couple weeks ago, but we informed them that this council meeting was coming up, and they were willing to extend the signing deadline till tomorrow to give the council an opportunity to decide whether they wanted to move forward on the project or not. So that's the key ingredient, is if the project does, if there is intent to move forward, we'll sign those interconnections, get them submitted tomorrow, and then that would lock in the NEM 2 status moving forward. And then, of course, the next step would be to apply for the 10% bonus and then wait and see what happens after that. So as far as the project scenarios, we've basically created two different options. They're very similar to each other. The only difference is option A does include the 10% bonus, whereas option B doesn't. And the $2.8 million net project cost down here at the bottom, sorry, my mouse isn't lining up with the screen, but down there, fourth line down. We understand that's the budget that was made available in the city's CIP budget. We also understood that the city did not have an interest in financing the project or borrowing any additional funds to pay for the project. So what we've done is we've scaled the project appropriately from a size standpoint, so that if those incentives are awarded, then the net cost to the city would match up with the funds that are budgeted. And then you can see at the bottom of the table, it shows what the 20-year lifecycle savings of the project would be, depending on whether we used a 2% annual escalation or a 5%. So it kind of gives you a range of the amount of savings that would accrue in those first 20 years. I should also mention that the estimated useful life of the systems themselves is 30 years, so you will get savings above and beyond just the 20-year mark. So that's
So the energy escalation, that's the increase of the PG&E rates?
Exactly right, yeah.
So we expect it to be anywhere between 2% and 5%? And over the lifespan of this, we will be realizing between $5 and $7 million in savings?
Correct, yes. Now, the last 15 years, the average annual utility escalation through PG&E was 5.8%. So if they keep that trend up, both of these numbers are conservative, so it could actually be more depending on how PG&E raises rates or not. But yeah, you're right. Okay, so that's option A. And then for that option, this is where the solar arrays would be located. So this is the parking lot next to the sports park. It would basically extend across the entire parking lot. It would be shade-covered carport structures, and then there would be another small array down here at the end to make up the size that we were targeting. Again, June 13th is the date that the interconnections need to be signed in order to maintain the status for the NEM 2.0. And then at the City Hall, the size of the system will not change at all. The city's already installed solar on the rooftop, and the interconnection application was submitted. However, there's guidelines with the interconnection application where the system has to be a certain size in order to maintain that NEM 2.0. So we actually need to add an additional 6.4 kilowatts of solar onto the roof to make that entire system eligible to receive the NEM 2.0 status for the next 20 years.
Could you go back two slides?
Sure.
Right there.
That was
That one there. The nexus with the capital improvement plan of the wastewater treatment energy use, can you explain that? Approximately 28?
I can explain that a little bit. So the CIP plan actually has that $2.8 million that is, has been budgeted through the CIP plan, and the monies are coming from the wastewater increase in rates that we agreed upon last year. And so for the most part, it's, go ahead.
I was about to just say, because it's simplified, the rate package for wastewater that the council considered had additional percentage in there to support the funding for this project. As depicted, that we tried to keep it within the budget.
If you recall too, there was two plans that were presented at that point in time. One of them had this particular project embedded in it, and the other didn't. So we looked at the two, and the savings in power was the incentive for us to kind of go for this.
So this is, I guess I just wondered what the nexus is to our wastewater.
I can answer that. So I believe, and maybe Gabe can also support or provide more detail, but I believe for an application to be accepted by PG&E, the interconnection application, the site needs to, the power needs to be generated onsite or on a site contiguous, so adjacent parcels, directly adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. So looking at the geographical location, the sports complex is continuously connected to the wastewater treatment plant. Does that answer?
I guess I'm just wondering, that's money we've set aside for our ratepayers, so there, how are they getting rewarded for this program? I just wanted to kind of get that.
I think we're also going to get into that a little bit more farther in the presentation. We're researching some other options for like low-income households and things like that.
Some follow-up questions, but I'll hold off.
Okay.
I think I just, I'm going to present more.
Yeah.
So the money that, the solar that's going in at the ball fields and the skateboard park are going to supply some of the power for the wastewater plant, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yes, that's exactly right. Yeah, there's size to offset as much of the power as possible within the interconnection.
That's the nexus I was looking for.
Okay. Again, the size for City Hall will not change. The only difference would be if the 10% income bonus is rewarded, then the net cost of the city would be less than what it would be if it wasn't rewarded. But we need to install at least 6.4 KW to maintain NEM 2.0. Okay, so this is a look, similar slide, option B. The only difference is you see the sports complex at 630 KW. That's smaller than option A. And the reason is if that 10% is not awarded, then we're going to decrease the size in order to decrease the cost in order to arrive at the $2.8 million targeted budget amount. You can barely see the difference, but there's 30 KW worth of panels less in this picture than there are in the other picture. Same situation at City Hall, this is the same slide. Again, it just depends on whether the incentive is awarded or not. This is kind of a visual that gives you an idea of when the investment would be returned. So you can see the darker blue or the aqua-type color, that's if PG&E raised their rates on average 2% for the next 20 years. The break-even point is right around 12-ish years, where that 2.8 gets recovered, and then all of the savings to the right of where it tips the zero point becomes net savings to the city. And then if PG&E raised their rates on average of 5% for the next 20 years, that lighter green bar that goes higher reflects the amount of savings. And like I mentioned before, if rates went up higher than 5%, there would be another bar that would be even higher. So again, we're just trying to give a visual idea of the range of savings that would come from the project.
We were trying to wait until he finished. Can you wait, or you want to?
Well, it has to do with that.
If you think you need to ask now, go ahead.
I'm just saying that when we did approve the rate increase on the sewer rates for our customers, the understanding was it would be more for the next several years in order to finance this project, and then the saving, then it wouldn't have to keep being raised in the future because we will get a payback for having the project save a lot of utility bills out there. So is that kind of the overall picture?
So I think we looked at this
That's the deeper question we were waiting for.
Yeah, so I think we're still going to have to look at low-income options. So there's another slide for that eventually, yeah, thank you.
And with that note, I'll turn it back to you, Leilani.
Sure. Yeah, so staff received Cizerco's request for proposal, and I think initially we received a proposal that showed a lending option, and we said, you know, this isn't what we want to go forward with. And so Cizerco came back with this tailored option that is basically meeting our budget. Cizerco Energy Solutions is a design-build energy services company. So they help public entities save money, reduce greenhouse gas emissions by implementing these different energy efficiency measures, installing solar PV battery storage systems. They've got offices in Fremont and Petaluma, and currently it looks like 25 megawatts of active solar projects this year. We're also made aware that Fort Bragg this week just approved additional solar projects working with Cizerco, and they approved that 5-0. And I believe they were constructing solar at six different city sites in Fort Bragg moving forward. So staff found this proposal to really support the goal of the project, and we also saw that energy, as an energy services company, Cizerco can provide a broader range of services after this project is complete as well, if we want to look at other energy efficiency savings for the city. Yeah, thank you. In addition to internal staff reviews, our internal legal department, we also reached out for additional outside legal counsel. We worked with Ellison Schneider, Harris Donlin, specifically attorneys Lynn Howe and Brian Behring. Brian Behring is actually on standby if there are additional questions for him. He is available for this meeting. We also worked with attorney Peter Michaels, who is an energy tax attorney, is a specialty. And we reviewed the city's eligibility for the IRA program, receiving those federal IRA benefits, both the 10% and the 30% rebate. And we also worked with Cizerco's team. They've got outside consultants to review the Inflation Reduction Act tax program and the process for applying. Thank you. And I think this is some of the questions that were coming up. We received additional counsel from Peter Michaels, this tax attorney, basically outlining what the 10% low-income additional IRA bonus requirements are. And as a result, it came to staff attention that we want to research the potential benefits that new solar facilities would, could provide for low-income households. So staff is currently researching if there's a way to create a program that would directly benefit eligible low-income households, if it were some sort of bill credit or other form of rebate in some type. We're still trying to research that. This is sort of new information that came up recently, so we haven't had time to necessarily dig deeply into that option. Any other questions on that slide in particular? Okay.
Go ahead and move forward. We have a few questions, but we'll hold them up.
Okay, this is the final slide here. So basically, the next steps, if council were to approve moving forward, the very first thing we would do is we would take care of the interconnection applications tomorrow. So we would get those completed, submitted, get that out of the way, get the city locked in for NEM 2.0. Then we would divert our, turn our attention over to the IRA program. We need to have an executed contract in order to apply for the 10% bonus. So once the contract was executed, we would use that information along with the other information that's required to submit to apply for that 10% bonus. At that point, we would wait. We expect it to take two to three months before the city hears back whether that bonus is awarded or not. If the bonus is awarded, then the idea would be to move forward with option A. And if the bonus is not awarded, then we would move forward with option B. And what we would do is Cizerco would offer, or basically, Cizerco would offer a deductive change order to lower the price and lower the system against the agreement to match up with the numbers that we'd shown on the slide before. So that's kind of the game plan over the next couple days into weeks into months. And that concludes the presentation.
All right, I'll turn, go ahead and ask your question.
For anybody that wants to answer, so we, so for our ratepayers, the reward is that, because I know we use a lot of energy there at the wastewater plant, that this would offset some of our energy costs immediately, albeit that we might not realize the full benefit depending on how far things go up from medium to mean. But our ratepayers are going to get a benefit from this, is that correct?
I would say we're still looking into if it can be a direct benefit, but I think at this point, we're seeing that there's a direct benefit for the city having cost savings and energy savings.
At a wastewater plant, right?
Yes, and so how those other savings might be utilized, that could be researched too.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Because it's on the same line. This is for Finance Director. How much of that $2.8 million do we currently have in reserve right now for this project?
Well, so we're at year one of actually collecting the taxes, and so we would probably use fund balance that we have currently in the accounts as is, and there's about $5.7 million.
We have $5.7 in there, we would use 2.8. And then what other big projects do we have in the next, say, two years out of that same fund?
I would have to look into it a little bit more to get back at you with that.
I guess what I'm getting at, and the reason why I'm asking, is because we're taking money, I'm thinking, we've taken money, we've been holding some money already, we're going to be collecting more money with this tax, and I'm wondering how ratepayers are going to, where, how will the savings allocation take place? So once the solar panels are installed and they start producing, we're going to have lower PG&E bills for the city, right? So we're going to see a savings in, I'm asking, this part is a question, are we going to see the savings in the wastewater account, their portion of the PG&E? Are we going to see it all the way across the board in all the accounts, or will all the savings all be applied to the general fund?
So they should all be applied over to the actual wastewater plant?
To the wastewater.
Yeah, because the wastewater plant is the one that is paying for the facility and everything.
So for clarification, this would, in our budgeting process, this would be savings in the wastewater program. in the wastewater program operations and facility operations.
Okay, but if I'm still following on that same process, hopefully you're with me. I believe I heard that on year 12, if I'm correct, on year 12, we would start to see things kind of spin backwards. It's slowly getting better. By year 12, we're back at zero, correct? Is that what I saw from the thing? Okay, so each year, it's a little bit less and a little less. I'm wondering, as we're moving forward, it's about every, what is it, every three or five years that we talk about sewer rates? And we just talked about it, was it a year or two ago?
Last year.
Okay, so we just talked about rates last year. Was that a three-year or a five-year plan?
Five.
A five-year plan. So we've already kind of know what we're going to have to increase. I'm wondering, as we're starting to talk about the savings that we're going to see, how that's going to affect the potential for increases that maybe we've already thought that we might have to make in the wastewater? And then as we get closer to year 12, because when we pass that increase for our water and our wastewater, there was concern from the public, like, are we going to keep doing this every year? And if I'm going to pass something for solar, I also want to know that this is going to solve that problem, that it's not going to keep going up. And people don't want to know that in 12, 13, 14 years, that's when they're going to see the savings. I think they want to know there's going to be a little bit applied every year so that they're not worrying that those rates are going to keep going up at this, at the exponential rate they are now.
So what'll end up happening is as the years go by, we will be getting the tax credit immediately. And so it'll be offsetting the actual operations of wastewater. And so we will be seeing the benefit in our operations as it stands. When it comes down to other projects and everything like that, there may be a stall, I'd have to look it up, and I'm trying to do so now, on exactly what other projects may be going on. But more than likely, what'll end up happening is it will kind of get there on a just-in-time for a few years, which means that as we're earning it, then we're spending it on the projects that we planned on slating for things coming up, so.
So out of that five-year plan, we're already one year in. In how many years before, one or two more years before we see solar panels producing? Would that be a year, two years?
Should be about a year and a half.
A year and a half. So that would put us about two and a half years in. Knowing that, have we done any factoring to figure out what that savings in that remaining two and a half years is going to look like so that ratepayers, because where we know, council knows that in the future, we're going to have to raise rates, right? If we're going to stay on par, I remember the presentation from before that said, you know, year one, year two, year three, four, or five, you're potentially going to have to raise this amount each year to keep up with the cost of the projects. But I don't recall when we were talking about the cost of the projects being factored in. I remember the savings being factored in because we didn't know when these solar panels would potentially be producing. So I'm just wondering, down the road, if we'll be able to see some kind of factoring? It could be a year from now, two years, six months after those panels are installed. But at some point, it should come back before the public and the council to kind of give us a sense of how that's going to impact ratepayers, where it's going to relieve some of that pressure on rate increases.
So when we considered the rates at that point, last year, there was a point in time where we talked to council about returning three years in and giving you an update on exactly where we were at and what, an analysis and the savings and everything like that, just to determine whether or not we were going to continue to raise the rates on that fourth year or hold off another year. Because we are seeing benefits to having the operations and everything like that be alleviated. So we were going to do an analysis and come back to council with an update on how much we've received in rates and what benefits have come towards us with this particular project in general because of the cost of it. And so we were expecting to come back, not this, not next year, but the year after and discuss exactly where we were, where we were going to be at that point.
This council, I guess the point of interest is this council may or may not be here in two, three, four, or five years. And so that's why I'm asking like the extended question. We're making the decision now. And so I just want to make sure that the intent follows through through the years. Obviously councils can change their mind, but I would hope that we're putting them on a course which is respective of the taxpayers today that are footing the bill for the project. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Can I ask a follow-up to your question?
Yes.
And again, that was, where I was headed with this is that when we looked at these increases, I am for solar as long as it's saving us money, not to be politically correct, but so that we're helping our ratepayers. And so that's why I want to make that clear. That's why I was asking those questions, so.
If I, yeah, I think we're getting a little confused on how we budget and fund the operations of the wastewater program. So basically, by implementing a solar system at the wastewater plant, what Gabe mentioned, it's creating a sense of independence from PG rate increases. So we saw what the estimate of rate increases over time. When those rates go into effect, we have to cover those costs. And those are some of those costs that are passed on to the account holders. By creating this means to separate us from PG&E, as we proceed through the schedule of the project, that's when we're going to see the savings on the operations cost of the facility. Now, let's be clear, this is not going to solve every fiscal situation at the wastewater treatment plant. There's going to be, on the collection side, there's going to be may, plant operations are going to need upgrading. But this creates an opportunity to reduce some of the pressure on rates by establishing a more defined utility schedule, usage, consumption plan for the council to consider.
I think we understand that.
Yeah, we're using a lot of power there and-
Yeah, I just don't want to say, oh, we're going to have savings, so that's going to all, that's going to see a savings across the board for wastewater program. It's not. It's the operations of the facility.
It's going to control costs.
Operating.
And the ratepayers are going to see the benefits. And that's really what we're concerned about.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
I have a question. So years ago, we, the city installed a solar array at the water treatment plant. And it sounded great upfront. And I don't know what the exact timeline was because this predates me, but at some point, the original contractor sold either the array or the contract for maintaining the array to another company. And then I think that even went to another company. And by the time the city was in a position where they needed some assistance, they didn't really know who to turn to. There wasn't a clear path on who would help us. And so I guess what I'm asking is what's in place this time around to make sure that things go differently, that, you know, 15 years down the road, if we need help, do we still reach out to Sizerco or is there someone else down the road? And have we kind of planned ahead for this?
Yeah, I can try to answer that. So I think one of the key differences with how this project is financed and how it's being installed, so from my understanding through past discussions with Jim and the outside council that was retained to get out of that past agreement, my understanding was that at the water treatment plant, there was a power purchase agreement, a PPA. And so what those agreements are, is basically the developer or the contractor that builds it owns the system and they're sort of getting, they're sort of like a middleman for getting the rate payments. So depending on the contract that you get with those power purchase agreements, you may not see the rate benefits. The difference with this project, this is not a power purchase agreement. We are using our funds as the city to own the system. We're not renting it out. This is going to be our system that we own. And if we choose to try to work with Sizerco for other system maintenance or replacement or things, it sounds like they are interested in that opportunity. But there are also energy services companies or contractors in general that provide those types of services, as well as legal counsel if you need to adjust contracts or just change how you want to do those systems in the future. Does that answer your question?
It does. And I just want to make sure that we've learned from the past and that our, you know, next foray into solar is actually really going to-
I think this is a prime example, we're owning this out.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you. Thanks for that reassurance.
Councilmember Strong, do you have any more questions?
No, it was just that, it's already kind of been brought up again, but the fact that when we raised the rates, it was to provide that 2.8 million that we had allocated in the CPI so that we can in fact own the system. And if we hadn't done that upfront, we wouldn't be even, we wouldn't have been this opportunity. So we're benefiting by owning it and we're also benefiting by getting the NEM 2 rates. And again, if PG&E keeps raising at the rate they have been, we're going to be able to save quite a bit of money. And it is up to future councils how that shows up in people's actual sewer treatment, their rates. You know, how much of it is going to be needed to do other improvements there? I don't know. You know, I think this cost saving is very substantial and so I'm enthused by this opportunity.
Stransky?
I think this is really a step in the right direction. I'm really pleased with this. I just, I went through the first that Greta mentioned with the solar at the water plant and that was a bummer, I couldn't believe. But she brought it up exactly. We had no idea where to go. And that's, if we're going to know where to go, that's the thing. And I think the water waste plant is the biggest user of power we have and we need to do something about it. And thank you very much for doing this. It's really a step in the right direction. Thank you.
All right, project that's good for the environment and saves money. All right, anybody from the public want to comment on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back up here. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll move, make the motion.
I'll second.
Can let Madge second?
You can have it, Madge.
All right, Madge, would you like to second?
I would love to second.
All right, that was gracious of you. All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor, ready?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I just want to thank the effort of staff that went into this, especially the last couple of weeks and working with Gabe and his team. We pulled a lot of information together. I know Jim was the center of a lot of discussions. We couldn't get what was presented in the simplified way tonight without the effort and dedication of Team Willard, so I appreciate that.
And can I also just say, I really appreciate the extra effort that went into making sure that we could lock in the NEM 2, that you thought ahead and got that in before deadline is fantastic. So thank you very much.
And the presentation was very clear. Thank you.
It was a good presentation.
And on that note, what we did last year, you know, we have to acknowledge a former staff member, Andrea.
Yes.
It was her watch that made sure that happened, so thank you.
That was her baby. All right, just noting that we will come back to item 3A when we get to good in welfare. And so department monthly reports are presented at the second meeting of each month. And yeah, we have none before us. So I'll move on to city council announcements, communications, and reports. I'll start at the center of the table, unless you'd like me to move on. Are you good? City council announcements, communications, and reports, you're up first.
Oh, yes, okay. I attended the Transportation Committee meeting last week with the mayor. We had heard updates on the 2023 PPP that Walter went over this morning or earlier this evening. We also heard about the update regarding 2024, which is in place now, and a proposal for 2025. So lots of good stuff happening. So was there any other particular, oh, there was a good discussion about the Starbucks going into the Highway 20 Main Street intersection regarding their parking plan and ingress and egress from their driveways. So good to know that the city is really trying to hold their, I don't want to say feet to the fire because that sounds more aggressive than I mean it to, but just to make sure that they're thinking through their ingress and egress plans to make sure we don't end up with a traffic cluster over there. And we did hear that the guardrail on Sherwood Road that was smashed by a hit-and-run driver right after we did our first repair is being repaired.
That's all completed.
Unfortunately, we did have to put the bill for that because there was no insurance to go after since we don't know who hit it. So if anybody from the public out there hears of anyone with a banged-up car, please let us know. And I think that was just my notes from that meeting. I missed the MCAG meeting on Monday. My dad was having surgery and my head was not in the game. I have to say, MCAG meetings are difficult for me. I enjoy them, but Monday is my day off and so it's not a regular business day for me. And so I'm not always thinking about my calendar, my work calendar, my council calendar. So if anyone else on council would like to step in and take on the MCAG role, I would be happy to step aside because I feel like I'm letting both MCAG down and the council down if I don't attend and I don't reach out to Larry as the alternate to attend. So I'm fessing up to making a mistake and if someone wants to help me correct it by being the MCAG representative, I will step aside.
Larry, you're the alternate. Are you willing to step up?
No, I'm just willing to be the alternate.
Okay, so not attend, but be the alternate. All right, okay.
Sorry, everyone.
All right, well, just keep trying. We also met with Measure K.
We did. We met with Measure K and received the news that the audit for 22 was completed. The Measure K committee members were very pleased that that was done. And I got the sense that there was a, maybe anxious overselling it, but definitely an excitement about being able to finally allocate the funds and start implementing some projects and ideas for the community to really put those Measure K funds to use. As Sabrina, the mayor, pointed out earlier, the committee as a whole has been conservative about allocating any of that money until there was a clear picture of where the finances stood, which personally I think is a good tactic. I know it's been a little hard for the city manager who's gung-ho to get some projects going. But do you think that, you know, it's a fiscally conservative oversight committee and that's good for our taxpayers and eventually when the funds do get implemented, I think it's going to make nice results for our citizens, so.
And our next Measure K meeting will not happen until after we see the final audit notes before we meet again.
The adoption of the budget.
The adoption of the budget, so we'll be able to make some recommendations to the full council.
Yeah, so then the Measure K committee will come to council and ask if we can start opening the purse, so.
All right, Councilmember Strong?
Okay, I have my three different agencies I'm going to report on. The first one was the NCO Solid Waste Management Authority, did meet in a special session on May 30th. And theoretically, we were going to be getting more information. I still find that the, there is really no detail in the recommendation or the financial statements. And just as an example overview kind of thing is that the budget is about $700,000 a year. And they show a relatively balanced amount of revenue with the amount of expenses. But the expenses of that $700,000, almost $500,000 is CNS operation of our solid waste management countywide. And there's no breakdown at all of that almost $500,000 as to what exactly is being spent. And meanwhile, about $400,000 of the revenue for the Solid Waste Management Authority is coming from the tipping fee. And that is now, right now, without any additional revenue sources, we're showing, they were showing a balanced budget for the '24, '25 fiscal year. However, at the meeting, it was proposed with, again, I thought, very little financial analysis, that we raise the tipping fee from the current 650 per 10. The tipping fee is what the waste haulers pay when they- ton. The tipping fee is what the waste haulers pay when they take their garbage and dump it on county facilities. So that is what finance, is the main finance source for the solid waste management, which handles the hazardous waste, which the haulers don't handle. And so they recommended an increase in the tipping fee from $650, and the staff recommended $850, and the Board of ENSWA actually approved a $3 per tipping fee rate increase. So it's going to be, I believe, $950 according to their approval, which is 30% more revenue coming in from that source. I raised the question, why do we need to raise it that much when we actually show a balanced budget? And the argument given was, justification, was that we blew through all of ENSWA's reserves early on when we privatized it to get, to process all of the hazardous waste that had been accumulated. There was a lot of work that had to be done by CNS when they took over. And I understand that. We used all the reserves. We got rid of all the hazardous waste. But again, there's no dollar implication there. So I'm just giving you a little background because I'm very frustrated. The vote on that increase of $3 per ton tipping fee was four to one. And I didn't feel like it was explained. I mean, we get explanations of what we're spending money for, and they didn't. So I am going to actually, you know, write, again, that I find this very frustrating. It's not going to have much impact on ratepayers for the garbage service. It's something like 10 cents per month per customer. But, you know, every customer in the whole county is paying extra because ENSWA feels like they need a bigger cushion of money coming in. That will not even start until January of 2025. That has to go through, you know, all the process. But that rate increase would start in January of '25. Anyway, I did want to report on that. Oh, and the other thing about that is that they believe, the staff believes that that does not require approval from the jurisdictions, which is the county and the four cities. They believe that that's just an operational cost or expense or whatever that the Board of ENSWA is unable to approve on their own. So I will, they are looking into that, whether it would come to us for approval. But I just thought it was-
Well, Bruce McCracken, when the city manager and I met with him, he said he didn't anticipate bringing a rate increase before us in January, and that it was very rare for him to ask for rate increases. So we'll see what happens.
Yeah, when we originally-
And we have to approve it.
I don't know whether we do.
We have to approve a rate increase.
Oh, okay. Well, it would be, it would be a pass-through cost through all of the haulers, you know. So anyway, that's, that was the status of that. I think I have one other, oh, yeah. When we originally looked at privatizing the ENSWA's operation, they had said they could do it at the exact same cost. And they could do, they could do a better job of it, and it wouldn't involve a great increase. So the Board, in their, you know, defense a little bit, in addition to creating a reserve, which we do need to have a reserve in order to qualify for any grant funds, we need to have money that we can pay our matching share for. So that, that was one good reason. And the other reason was that they would like to actually expand services, have more remote pickups, more, you know, what's it called?
Dump sites or something?
Dump sites, you know, that are illegal dump sites that clean up. They think they could do a better job and expand the services. And that's fine, too, but there ought to be an explanation.
Any other city appointee coming in?
Yeah, that's the, that's the ENSWA report. On June 6 of this, this past week, Sonoma Clean Power met, and there were some interesting things that came up there. And I won't go into much detail about it because we're all getting tired. But one thing that I thought was interesting is the transportation needs assessment that in, there's whole Sonoma Clean Power territory, 20% of people's income is going to transportation. But in Mendocino County, it's 31% of people's income is going to the transportation needs, and that somewhere between 95 and almost 100% of people rely on their cars for their transportation. Another real interesting thing was the geothermal. They, Sonoma Clean Power, are funding a study to try to look at how to be more flexible with all of these power, you know, like what was explained today, where, you know, in the summer, you've got lots of solar. In the winter, you don't have that. So all of these things that happen on an hourly basis with supply and demand make a huge difference in the cost of getting the energy to us. And they're, they, Sonoma Clean Power, are going to fund a study to how to figure out more flexibility in how those surges and deficits are handled. And I think they're going to get partners from other community choice aggregates and possibly from, from our utility companies like PG&E. But I think they're taking a real big initiative to look at how they can level off those financial implications of getting power. They're also working really hard on the geothermal options that we have here, and we're really lucky to have. So, and they're lobbying in both the PUC and in Sacramento for various ways to protect the consumers on the UG. The third one is EDFC, the Economic Development Financing Corporation. They are meeting tomorrow afternoon at 2:00. I will be attending from here. And I think they have mostly sort of business, the reports on the loans, some bylaw changes. They're basically keeping things rolling pretty efficiently, and it's mostly a business kind of meeting.
All right. Thank you. Anything from here?
Yes, I, yes, I have been on the, from the very start, a year ago, about planning the car show in Main Street. And I'm, there's some really dedicated people in this community that have worked at it and really worked it out. And I thought that it was very, done very well. And I was on the meetings, on the meetings from the, from the group of people that put it together. And I think that I stood at the gate, the South Gate, when people came and asked questions about how they compared it to somebody else. And some of the things that people said were amazing. And I think that anybody that hasn't done this needs to do it. It's very eye-opening about people and how much that they don't know. I'll just put it that way. And anyhow, but it was done very good. And John really took it on himself and worked it out, and it was done very well. I think the merchants that stayed open on Sunday thought that it was a good idea. Greta, was it a good idea for you to stay open on Sunday?
Yeah.
And, and was it good for you?
I participated too. It was just good in general to be able to interact. It's always good to interact with, with the community and see people enjoying Willetts.
Anyhow, I just think that it was done very well, and I hope that it continues. Thank you very much.
Well, good. Thank you.
Mayor, you said South Gate?
He was on the South Detour.
Oh, South Detour. Oh, yeah. You said South Gate. I was trying to figure out what we were-
That was, where you got, either went around, he was the gate you went through.
Oh, okay. All right. No, I was just curious of that. Okay, I did LAFCO on the 3rd, and we had a couple items. One was a public hearing on the Pacific Reef's Water District Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence. They're a private water company over on the coast. Well, not, they're, they're public, which is kind of funny. They, they actually have meetings at one of the, their board members' houses. It's, there's a couple folks there. I mean, we, and we had a public hearing on our final budget and work plan for 2024, 2025, and we approved our budget. And with that, I think I was told the next day that they sent out the notifications to all the different entities because LAFCO gets its funding not only from, from each of the cities and the county and different entities, whether they be water districts or, or fire districts, et cetera. Everybody pays something at LAFCO. So, and everybody pays some sort of proportional amount. We had a workshop on the Guadalajara Community Service, Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence Study. And we had a, an amendment to our policy for outside agency services. So, kind of like when people wanted to do the water, that water thing that was supposed to happen that never happened, where they were going to ship water from Yucaya to Fort Bragg and all of that. We have a policy on how that should take place. So, and that, that's all I have. And then again, I thank you, Larry. I saw you out in your little, your traffic control vest thing. And me and the wife took the dog out and talked to a lot of the participants out there. And everybody was just happy to be there. And I think when people asked me, I said, you know, this is what happens when you take back your Main Street. So, all right, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. I think Greta already touched on the committees that we share together. Mendocino Transit Authority, for the most part, it was routine business at our, our regularly scheduled meeting. As chair, I participated in two other meetings as well as numerous phone calls and such, just dealing with routine business. Mendocino Transit Authority is posting, is hosting the North State Transit Symposium. And so agencies from all over the north will be coming to Yucaya. We're hosting on July 10th and 11th. So if you want to learn more about transportation in your community, that, those are opportunities. And I can bring you more information, too, as we get closer. And Willie West, who is a Willets resident, was appointed to the Board as well. So he's one of our new Board of Directors. And we thanked Bruce Richards, who retired from our Board. And I think that is all that I have there. All right, moving on to Good and Welfare. We're going to revisit 3A, and I'm going to read the proclamation for our Good and Welfare. So a proclamation of the Willets City Council designating Willets Western Wear Days. Whereas Willets Frontier Days is the oldest continuous rodeo in the state of California, and this year's theme, Cowboys and Cadillacs, marks the 90th staging of Willets Frontier Days, an event that draws visitors from all over to celebrate Independence Day as well as our historic community. And whereas each year, this event is run solely by hard-working volunteers, with many hours dedicated to putting together this traditional event. Whereas this annual community event inspires great pride in all of us who call Willets home, past and present. And whereas this past year had its challenges, as contractors, Frontier Day volunteers, and city crews pulled together to complete the repairs to facilities damaged during the December 2022 storm. The dedication shown by these groups ensured the wonderful event will take place at the rodeo grounds this year. Therefore, the city council extends our gratitude to Willets Frontier Days for their patience and understanding during the construction. So I, therefore, Suprema Rodriguez, Mayor of the City of Willets, along with Vice Mayor Eduardo Gonzalez, Councilmember Larry Stransky, Matt Strong, and Greta Connie, do hereby proclaim June 21st through July 4th, 2024, as Western Wear Days. So, there we are.
Thank you.
The 98th year. That's, that's pretty long. It's a long time. I know many of those volunteers have been volunteering for years or decades. So we thank them and the city's contribution in helping to get the necessary repairs completed. Any other-
Just a quick question. Are we going to have a city council entry on the 4th of July this year? Do we not?
Well, I think we always have a vehicle. It's a matter of how many council members. So each of us council members can reach out to Dolores and let her know if we're available that day to ride on the, it's usually the pickup. Does that sound good? All right, any other Good and Welfare?
I do. At the last council meeting, Supervisor Hasek was here and spoke about the mobile outreach program that the county offers. They have a behavioral health specialist who goes out with PD in both the unincorporated areas and the city of Fort Bragg for calls that might involve someone having a mental health crisis. And I asked if there was a possibility of having that program here in Willets, and he said he didn't know, but he would look into it. He got back to me that same day and has spoken to our city manager, who was in turn spoken to our chief of police and our interim chief of police. And it looks like there's some discussion about the possibility of extending that program here to the city of Willets. So I'm very pleased that both the city manager and the chief are looking into it. It'll offer a great resource, not only for our officers, but also for members of our community who might need a different approach than law enforcement during a difficult, particularly difficult day. So, thank you, Brian.
All right. And I just want to, a token of appreciation for those, I believe Kathy and others that are working on the pool. I've heard good feedback from the public, seeing that we're starting to put back in place an expansion on pool hours and even advance. And I just saw today posted that the city of Willets is going to have the pool open on, during the hometown festivities, which I've already have heard lots of buzz about that being a welcome. So, and then the other thing is, is for Good and Welfare, is that the city had 150 vouchers for waste disposal, waste disposal through the Clean California Grant. And it sounds like most of them have now been picked up. And I think it's noteworthy that it was mentioned when I inquired earlier today how many were left and kind of who they went to, that there were some active cases where people had, needed to take care of getting rid of some waste in their property through maybe code enforcement or otherwise. And some of those vouchers were able to go to help those people.
So on that front, Phil Davis, in Code Compliance Officer, working with Davey Bowles, made a concerned effort. They have numerous active enforcement cases, and they actually took about, I think, 15 or 20 vouchers, took them off the stack and said, okay, we're going to go to those properties and say, here, you need to start cleaning up and reducing the waste or items collected on your property. Here's how to facilitate that.
I think that's, that's, that's important to note because, you know, it's giving, you know, we're enforcing it, but we're also giving them a means to get the job done. So I thought it was, it was definitely good. All right, with that, we are, we're going to convene. We're going to take a five-minute break. It is 8-
Do you need a little longer?
8:20. And we convene at 8:25. We have two items before us for closed session. We have the existing litigation in the matter of Craig Anthony Gilbert versus the city of Willets, as well as labor negotiations with the Willets Police Officers Association. I'll see you all in five minutes. If there's anything to report out, we will come back and report it out. Thank you so much.
Session adjourned at 9:45. There's nothing to report out this evening.